All right, the December 7th edition of the Rockport School Committee is now in session. First item, we are going to be recording tonight as we're always recording. This will be broadcast in Studio 1620 live and there'll be a taped broadcast always available. If you can't get to the audience on Wednesday nights. First item is the approval of minutes from November 16th. We were all here for that. Does anyone wish to make any amendments to the notes as presented? No, do we have a motion to approve as submitted?
So move second.
All those in favor? Aye, so it passes unanimously. Next item is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on anything in our agenda tonight? Not seeing anything. We're going to jump down actually to items nine A and B because we have some time sensitive information, or at least we have people who have other places. They need to be quickly tonight. So the first one is the Rockport Middle School State of the School Fall Update Presentation.
See that button that says push right on that microphone? So you're going to want to push that and whoever's talking just slide the mic right in front of you and you'll have that nice big voice.
Push it again until it turns green. There you go.
Push it again to go red?
No, you're good.
You'd agree.
You're good.
So you should push this over here?
Yep.
Well, good evening and thank you for inviting us to the school committee meeting this evening. And I want to introduce my two colleagues here, Anna and Aiden. And we do appreciate you allowing us to go first so they can head off to swim practice as they have just come from play practice after a full day of school. So we do appreciate that. So we have our little PowerPoint here. We have not rehearsed this, but I'm going to ask them to speak about their experiences so far this school year before we get into the rest of the PowerPoint.
So we recently went on a student leadership conference in New Hampshire at a college. I forget what college it is.
Something Hampshire University.
Yeah, something New Hampshire University. I should probably remember that. But we learned about different types of leadership and Mr. Rodman organized it.
Correct.
Yep. And that was, that was a great experience. And we had a few field trips and a couple concerts. And we, we recently, the student council, we raised over $9,000 in funds that we are going to put some of that money towards a school dance. And that's like the recent events. Anything to add, Aiden?
Nope.
So, so we, as you can see, you know, from the PowerPoint, you know, we, our in-school experiences include engaging classroom teaching and learning of curricula. This is, you know, as I have come on in my first year here at the middle school, we've done some exciting stuff like we've had the school-wide walk-around activity, walking around the track, and that has been like awesome. The students get some exercise, they get an opportunity to maybe be with friends that they don't get to be with all the time. So it's become a real positive social event for us. Our field trips, as Anna had said, we've had a few, you know, in-school field trips or, you know, curriculum-related field trips down to the Saltmarsh, the Hammond Castle, which is, and our band has played at Delmar, Delmar?
Denmark?
Denmark. Yeah, we walked down there. It's been pretty, that was a really great thing to see our students, our jazz bands. It was freezing and I can't believe that they were able to play their instruments, but we walked down to Denmark and that was really nice. And at our eighth grade is, we're planning our DC trip for the end of May, beginning of June, getting back right before graduation. So that has been very good. And then so far this year, we have our community service opportunities. We had a very successful food drive and we're in the process of our penny war competition for fundraising for the Cape and Animal Aid. Do you want to talk about the?
So our penny war, it's between the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And the goal is to raise as much money into your jar in pennies so you can, well, win bragging rights and spirit points, which all go forwards to the big spirit championship at the very end of the year.
All the profits go to Cape and Animal Shelter.
In our penny challenge, it encourages you to put sabotage other teams with anything other than pennies. And all that money that we make, as Anna said, goes to Cape and Animal Shelter where we give them all of it and you may be getting something in return.
We may bring a puppy to school. Yeah, that's, that's what we get.
That's what we get in return.
But we are not looking for anything. The sixth graders are focusing on generosity this month and giving, yes?
Yeah, you said sixth graders.
Sixth graders.
All of us are.
Oh, yeah. Mostly them. We, we all did it in the past. And so that's what the sixth, we don't have any sixth grader representatives here, but that's what they're doing. And should I move on to the after-school?
Sure.
So we have theater. We're putting on a production of Mary Poppins. We actually just came from that rehearsal. The production is on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this week. And the athletics, it's now basketball, swimming, and I think that's it.
Hockey.
Hockey, hockey. Oh, my brother always hockey, totally forgot about that. And the after-school clubs, I don't know all of them.
Oh, I think I could probably list them.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
We have the list.
I have to solve them, no.
And I think that's.
So one of the most important clubs that we have in our school is our student council. And that's how Anna and Aiden ended up here tonight is that Anna is the president of the student council and Aiden is the vice president of our student council. And every homeroom has.
He's a secretary.
A secretary, excuse me, has the, but, my mistake. But every, there are four officers and that each homeroom has a homeroom rep. And what are some of the other things that student council does?
We're trying to bring back the vending machines at the school. And that is, well, it's, we have to fix them first. So that's difficult. And we're planning a school dance, as I mentioned before. And we.
How often do you meet?
The officers meet every week and the student reps meet every other week.
Great. Did you want to add anything?
As student council, we plan all the spirit days for the school. We're all the people that get dressed up for, we have an ugly sweater day coming up. We also organize the fundraisers and fundraise money for us to go back into the school to start clubs. We're thinking about maybe a student newspaper at some point, start.
Debate team.
Debate team, think about debate team, things like that. We bring that money back to the school.
There we go. And just some pictures that we've taken from different events at school down at the Saltmarsh. And then the one on the upper right is at the student leadership conference. There was an activity that students and our students were paired with it, students from another school for this activity. It was pretty cool because we, there were students from every state in New England was represented. I think we were working with a school audit from Boston. It was for this, for this activity. Other picture is the, our jazz band playing down at the Denmark. And the bottom right-hand picture is students during breast cancer awareness a week at our school. Get this to work. How come this?
I got it.
You got it?
I do know.
Yeah, just more pictures of the food drive, students doing, from the student council doing morning announcements, a STEM activity, and there's our orchestra playing for our students. And then we had a kindness activity for our students and, you know, getting to know one another with a paper airplane activity. And then the bottom right-hand one is our students out on one of their school-wide Not to dwell too much on our, as everybody knows, what our district activities are, you know, as we're working on professional days around literacy, inclusive practice, and the equity mindset set by the district leadership team and Dr. Branko. Mark, if you could go to the next one. Even though it says building-based initiatives and looking forward, this is kind of what my personal goals are as I began at the middle school is that getting to know the staff, students, as well as the community. I believe it's important that, you know, since we are Rockport Middle School that we are making sure that we keep our middle school identity. One of the things that I want to work on is evaluating that whole piece on student retention, both those students who are coming into Rockport Middle School and then ensuring that we are hoping that they go on to Rockport High School when they leave the middle school. And other things, you know, that I've been working on is ensuring that we keep the team model and, you know, how are we scheduling and how is that working with shared staff, you know, that we, both between us and the high school. And the next one is how is this being done? Is as a staff, we have, are looking at the book, The Successful Middle School, This We Believe, which is the Association for Middle Level Education's book on what are those things that make a great middle school? And we began with a staff audit, a survey of the three areas that kind of identified and within those three areas of culture and community, curriculum instruction, assessment, leadership, and organization are 18 characteristics that, you know, make up, you know, what should be going on in the middle school. So we're taking a look at that as a staff, but knowing that we have other initiatives that we're also working on. But it does keep us focused on the middle school programs, practices, and philosophy. And we're looking at our strengths within those 18 characteristics and we're looking at those areas of need, you know, things that we can work on, some that maybe we can do right away and some that we can address over a longer period of time. So it is kind of, it's, it's exciting and I think the staff is really engaged in this work. And I think that's probably about what we have to offer. But I do, before we leave, I want to thank Anna and Aiden for coming this, tonight. And I really want to thank the district leadership team. Everybody's been so supportive of me as I have, you know, just have come to Rockport since the middle of August and it's been a great experience to this point.
So I've got a question for Anna and Aiden. There must be something that the student body wants in those vending machines. What is it that's really popular?
Don't ask this question.
I think they don't want to have contact with other human beings to like go up and buy snacks. Like there are snacks that you can buy at the counter like during lunch, but they're not always, the staff there aren't always like around. And I don't know, kids get hungry in the middle of the day.
So it's like self-service. That's the desirability of it.
You still have to talk to people while you're going like around. I don't know.
See, prior years I heard it's ice cream. We want to be able to get ice cream.
I think it's vegetables, right?
Yeah, I was going to say carrots. Right, right. Fresh veggies.
We do have ice cream, but not all the time, right?
Most of the time.
Most of the time.
Most of the time. And we have hot chocolate in the summer. It's not summer, it's spring, spring, spring. We have hot chocolate.
But also, you know, that's, it is really a good point. I think it's a great project for the student council because, you know, we get to school early. Most of the students are there, you know, between 7:15 and, you know, latest by 7:30. And our lunches, because we, you know, share the cafeteria, we have lunch beginning at 10:10. And you're done by 11:30, but then we have students that are there till five or six o'clock at night with after-school activities and they're hungry. They're growing and I think having the vending machines here is a great idea and a great project for our students.
That's great. I was going to ask Anna and Aiden, you mentioned, I think, that you've raised $9,000. Is that right?
Yes, that was through a wrapping paper fundraiser. And like you could buy like wrapping paper, chocolate, candles, like any sort of like holiday gifts. And yeah, we raised about $9,000.
That's great. That's a good amount of money.
Yeah, and it all goes towards the student council. Like we can use it. And usually like we do fundraisers for like other people, so it's not that often that we get that much money.
Is it $9,000?
Yeah.
Sounds like a lot.
I know.
Just hitting him.
That's great.
I think the senior class would like to be able to.
Yeah, right. Well, thank you guys for coming tonight. Good luck at the swim practice and good luck with the play.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This weekend.
This weekend. Break a leg.
Mr. Rodman will be wearing a bumblebee costume.
Ah.
On stage.
Extra incentive.
Again?
I was hoping to hide that.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
It was exciting. So next up is the high school State of the Fall Address.
Do you want the center seat side too?
No, it's okay. I have my computer just because I have my notes. Hello, everybody. All right. So we're going to do a quick update of the high school. I have Sophia, Abby, and I'll include Josh in here as a high school student who have a few things to share in addition to just the updates of what we have going on so far. So do we have the clicker?
I can do it if you.
That's all right. I can in theory do it. Maybe. Oh, there we go. So as, as Mr. Rodman just talked about, and I know you've heard a lot about already from Dr. Branko, just the areas of focus, not just for the high school, but for the district are around equity and inclusion, literacy for all, and curricular review of programming is more happening in each individual school at this point, but that's been a large focus at the high school already. And we're only at the beginning of that process, so there's a lot of exciting work. And most of the time that the staff have spent so far in the few PD times that we've had and opportunities that we've had have been around equity and inclusion, which has been really exciting because there's been a lot of work that has encompassed the entire district, which isn't always the case. And sometimes things, you know, are happening, were happening in silos. So it's been really exciting this year for the staff to have time, dedicated time with district vision along with, you know, the middle and the elementary schools together, which has been fun. The literacy for all, we haven't gotten into in-depth yet at the high school, but that is going to be coming. And really, the majority of our time right now has been spent on the curricular review of programming and we're kind of knee-deep in that right now. So the professional development, as I said, the cross-building collaboration, district priorities around equity and inclusion are up and running in full effect. The program of studies, I won't go into in complete detail because that will be coming at a new meeting and there's a lot to report on that. But there's been a lot of great energy around from the staff, from Dr. Branko, who's been leading our curriculum meetings around just really reimagining the vision and getting excited again for what we can do with what we have and really building and getting people engaged and excited for the work that we have ahead of us, which has been really, really inspiring and exciting to get into. As you know, the music and the arts are flourishing all around town and that's what I want some of our students to talk about. Honestly, again, every year, I just don't think it can get any better. And then I go to these performances and they continue to get better and better. Josh and Abby, I know are both involved, have been involved in the plays. And then currently we're, we have an exciting new Drama Fest production coming up, which I talked to Ms. Farazzi about and Mr. Montgomery earlier today. And Josh or Abby, I didn't know if either of you wanted to say a little bit about it because it is pretty exciting, given the fact that you're going to be working with the author of a book to really write and produce this play.
Yeah, we're. We, we got permission from an author. There's a kid's book, Beverly Billings Takes a Bow, BBB. And we got permission to write our own production of the play. So we'll be writing and doing, I think, some choreography and some music composition for it and just building the play to fit what we think it should be like.
We started organizing all of that today. We all sat down, whoever could be there. We read the picture book and we decided like all the characters we want to keep, like we picked out the scenes and how we could expand those because if we were to just do the book as is, it would be about 10 minutes. And Drama Fest is a competition where we go and it's a whole day. We go to another school. Every school that goes there presents their own production and the rules are pretty strict. It has to be under 40 minutes. If you, you can do 39 minutes and 59 seconds, but if you hit the 40-minute mark, you're disqualified. You have certain, like I think it's three or four minutes to set up your set. You get the day before, I think it's about an hour to prepare everything there, to mark your spike tape on the stage, for the sound technician and the lighting to get their programming done. It's pretty intense, but it's very fun. So we're excited to start that process.
And I know Ms. Farazzi was beyond, I'm sure both of them have been hearing, but she had reached out to this author sort of blindly, thinking, oh, he'll never get back to me, you know, whatever. And he got back and he's like, nobody's asked me to do this before. I'm going to have the students write and produce this play and I'm going to fully support it. I'm going to be a part of the process. So it's been really exciting to work with, you know, a famous published author on producing an authentic and original play. So the students are starting that writing process and we'll get up and running with the production pieces of it after the vacation. We've asked Sophia and Abby as seniors to come and talk a little bit. As you know, we're in the midst of college application season. There's also seniors, I'm doing internships and different online opportunities and partnerships that, you know, sometimes as freshman sophomore students don't even know maybe exists. So I wanted them to share a little bit about their experiences with that. Do you want to talk about what you're doing and what's happening?
Sure. So currently I've applied to five colleges. We'll be applying to two or three more. I want to go into deaf education, so that brings me to my internship. So three days a week for about half of their school day, I intern at Beverly School for the Deaf. And there I'm a paid intern, teacher's assistant, so I work in a classroom with four students because it's heavily special education there. So their classes are within, I think the smallest class is two kids, so two to like six kids per class. Two, three out of the four students are deaf, one is hard of hearing. It's, it's like I walk in the door and I put in a whole new brain. It's like all ASL, American Sign Language. And then I come home and it was a difficult transition at first to come from speaking in 100% American Sign Language to coming home and having to verbalize everything again. So that brings me to my online classes. So freshman year we started and I was like, my class was the guinea pig for freshman seminar. And we did the 20 Time Project and that's how I found American Sign Language. And then COVID hit and we couldn't continue the 20 Time Project. But I ended up continuing a self-paced online class through the pandemic and I just fell in love, wanted to continue it. And then that brought me to coming back into school. I wanted to have an ASL class and I wanted to continue that during my school day like I did at home. So I talked with guidance and we found the school's partnership with VHS Learning, which allowed me to take ASL 2. Last year and this year I'm taking ASL 3. So last year it was a lot of vocabulary. It's a lot of like time management. You get all of your coursework on the middle of the week and you have a week to submit it all. And this year it's ASL 3, so it's a lot of grammar and less vocabulary, more skill-based conversational skills. So both those online classes and my internship has advanced my ASL skills and like educational experience profoundly. I can understand about 90% of assigned conversation. I work alongside deaf staff members, so it's been an amazing experience. And the flexibility that seniors get with their schedules, like without that I wouldn't have been able to have either of those experiences. So it's really nice. Go ahead, Sophia. Thank you.
Hi. So so far I've applied to all 12 of my schools. I'm set to hear back next Thursday. So a little scared, but I'm planning on going into either engineering or construction management. So that brings me to my internship, which is working with the City Engineer of Gloucester. So every day after I get out of school around 11:30, I head over to the City Hall Annex and I basically do data analysis for them. Right now I've been working on reservoir levels for the droughts that have been happening. And usually I make Instagram posts for the droughts saying people have to switch their water or use different water treatment plants. My internship also involves a lot of going around town, checking out the reservoirs, checking pump stations or water mains. It's more water compliance than engineering for now, but I'm hoping I get to learn some more engineering type stuff. But I think having these internships is like a super helpful opportunity for us to really see what we want to do with our lives. Or like even like if we have an idea, like I, engineering has been like an idea for me for a while. And I feel like this internship has like helped me kind of realize like what type of engineering I want to do. Civil engineering is probably not on my list, but it's still super, like a super cool opportunity in meeting like people who could help, who are helping me like plan my future out a little bit and like saying that if I ever need help with anything in my future that they'll be there like one call away really to just like help me out or give me guidance. So I think it's really cool for us to have internship opportunities along with also service study opportunities. I have a service study right now that I've been doing for the past two years with Mr. Parisi in the athletic department. I'm actually the assistant athletic director now, no big deal, but. That's also a super interesting opportunity because one of, for some of my schools, I applied into sports management instead of construction management because I just like to be kind of the behind the scenes of the athletic department, kind of figure everything out. I'm helping Mr. Parisi with uniforms, schedule checking, like all that fun stuff. But I think us having all of these opportunities. Athletic updates every week. Yeah, I love doing my athletic updates every week for Ms. Rose. So yeah, it's super, super cool and fun experiences that I've had in my past two years, two full years at Rockport High School. So.
That's cool.
And then just also to highlight, and I welcome Josh, Abby, and Sophia to jump in anytime with any of this, but I think some people don't know, so I wanted to make sure that everybody did know that this year we've piloted our partnership with North Shore Community College. We've always offered dual enrollment classes through North Shore, but this year we're actually hosting a course in Rockport High School. We have 17 seniors taking it. It's a North Shore Community College course under their early college program and it's hosted Tuesdays and Thursdays at Rockport High School from 12:30 to 2:00. So the North Shore Community College professor comes to the high school, teaches the course. Students that are in the course get five credits, high school credits, and three credits, college credits. And they also get AP credits and can take, take the exam if they choose to. And next semester it will be psychology. So we also are building on our articulation agreement with them for next year around any of our business courses, which have already been approved in term, or two of them have been approved already through the curriculum we have so that we actually have teachers, Rockport High School teachers, teaching business courses we can next year. And it's already been approved that they will get North Shore Community College credit for taking those courses. And the, our teachers will be working with the college to continue on that agreement and expand upon it for next year, which is really exciting. It's at no cost to students. It's an equal opportunity for anybody to take and it's never a cost, so that's really exciting. And also with Salem State University, we have dual enrollment partnerships currently going on where students can take any of those courses for free and they can get Salem State credit and high school credit. And next semester we'll be offering a course, which we don't know yet what it will be, but a course at Gloucester High. And next semester we'll be offering a course, which we don't know yet what it will be, but a course at Gloucester High School in partnership with them. So there's a lot of opportunities outside the realm, as many of you know, but um of what we offer in our program of studies where students can really hone in. And get experience if they're willing and able to kind of branch outside of their comfort zone. In terms of just spirit events and culture building stuff, we've been really trying to ramp things up and bring back the fun now that, you know, last year we were back in the building and. And we were able to do some things, but not at full capacity, so we've really been trying to get people excited. Um, get students up in front of us at assembly, which sometimes it's like pulling teeth cuz it's hard for them. Although the music never disappoints me, Josh has been up a few times, um so that's always exciting, this month we're doing Friday theme, um. Friday themes, just where people are inputting different things that they wanna do, we did pajama day last Friday, this, this Friday we're doing a tropical theme. Um, so you know, it's just, just more to bring morale and fun, um the freshmen are gonna be doing manhunt around the building next. Thursday after school cuz they just wanted to and I was like, sure, why not? Um, door decorating and karaoke and we did castle ball before vacation, or before the Thanksgiving break. So there's been, you know, quite a few opportunities for us to just come together and be excited. Um, which are what some of these pictures are, a lot of music, ice hockey, basketball just started and are up and running. The one there kind of in the middle with everybody like this is the winners of castle ball, they were super excited about that. And pajama day, Dr. Brady's gonna love me that I included her in this presentation. Um, we have the band playing downtown um this past weekend, uh and just, just so many good things happening and so many reasons for us to. To be grateful and makes me excited to come to work every day, just watching what the kids are doing, so. Um, I don't know if you guys have anything else I forgot you wanna add or?
Sure, yeah, I'll give a little senior class officers update. So I am the president of the senior class, um and so far this year we've done two successful fundraisers. Not raising as much as the middle school did, but we raised. But.
Okay.
Ex- extra zero.
Okay, so then we did, we did fundraise more than the middle school. But we've done two fundraisers this year, one of them being a Halloween Candy Grams fundraiser, which we did last year for Valentine's Day, which someone could send somebody another candy bag. Dr. Branko bought a few, we thank you for that. And we also sold wreaths, we were in partnership with Wolf Hill, we bought a few wreaths, or not a few, but we bought a couple wreaths from them. And we sold them with bows and we were able to make around nine hundred dollars with that, which that money will go straight to our class for the senior banquet, for yearbook costs. Basically all that end of the year senior stuff that needs to be paid for, and if we need, if the juniors need help, we'll help them pay for prom. So lots of fun stuff going on. If you guys need help, I'm just saying. But yeah, we've been, we planned prom last year, it went great, um and it's been a lot of fun and I'm gonna be a little bit sad leaving as my, my class president role. It's, it's a lot of fun, so, yeah.
He's got a whole nother update.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I'm not exactly sure what the junior class is up to, I'm not one of their officers.
The, the only thing I will add cuz, and I should have probably included in this presentation is I am working with um Mr. Rodman to get. These lovelies up in front of the eighth graders next week, um so we will be doing Abby and Sophia, but also. You know, hopefully Josh and, and a, and a panel of students and to talk about what they're involved with, go into more detail into some of these opportunities. That, you know, our students are able to take advantage of and really start getting Rockport High School up in front of the eighth graders more and more. And obviously there'll be more opportunities as we head into course selection to make sure that we're promoting and, and you know, celebrating the high school as much as possible.
I think it's so great that the both of you so taken advantage of the internship possibilities because. Sophia is a former co-op student, I can tell you, the experience tells you as much about what you don't wanna do as what you do wanna do and. Finding out that civil engineering, maybe not so much, that's a cool thing, but it's really great that you were able to, to leverage that into your own. Decision-making, the both of you, so kudos to both of you for that.
Thank you.
So I actually have a comment um that I think is really interesting, um kind of just a follow-up to what you just mentioned, uh Amy. And Jeff actually, so you're just talking about how these internships and just super amazing, super beneficial. And the dual enrollment classes and how you're working at getting that in front of the eighth graders. Well, I thi- that's fabulous and I think we need as a school to get that in front of the parents and the caregivers in the community as a whole as well, cuz it's truly. Amazing what you're doing, like that's, like that, that experience for you guys is, is great, I'd love for everybody to hear your stories that you just mentioned. And it goes along to what Jeff was saying with um the retention, looking at the eighth graders and the retention. And I think the more we can do that and more get that message out as a whole to the community, it's gonna filter down to the, to the middle school. So, really nice.
If I could add to that, when, when we came up with the new webpage, which now is the old website, I guess. But uh, we asked for that at a glance section and Amy, I think you're probably the one that keeps that updated with the student-teacher ratio, we kind of did that based on what some private schools do because. You know, for those of us who have had kids successfully go through the high school, we know you're, it's as good as any private school, they can get, the kids can get the opportunities. Um, and the parents can save the money for college, um so there are important things in there that I do think help with retention as well, like if you could add, like. How many credits could kids get from college, you know, the, more than in most of the private schools. Uh, they could come out with a, with, you know, a semester's worth of credits or whatever, you've got the AP course offerings there. And it would be awesome if we could have like a feature student story somehow on the webpage to get that word out, because parents who are looking at schools. Are, are getting a very nicely packaged, private school package at any, any place they look. And our school has all of that and um obvious sometimes in the arts and the music, but less obvious in all these other opportunities. That are, you're increasingly making available, doing a fantastic job doing that, Amy, really great work.
Thank you, yeah, and I, and we are excited as a team that we've been coming together and having a lot of those conversations and really talking about branding and getting things out there and. I know that will be in part of Dr. Branko's entry plan, but also as part of that really thinking methodically about how we can piece together, package it. Not just for the high school, but getting it out before high school, because I think, as I've always said, once they're in the high school isn't typ- typically, hopefully, not typically. When we lose people, it's, it's before they get to high school sometimes, so really it's how to get that word out early on. And get people excited and motivated and, and the kids and families understanding the potential of what Rockport High School has to offer early on, so we've been talking a lot about that.
Great, how would we sign, thank you very much, an ASL?
This is thank you, um.
Very much.
Thank you very much, could be two hands or like thank you so much, um many different ways, yeah.
I know, being half Sicilian, that's very dicey. But thank you guys, that was a great update.
Thank you so much for having us, appreciate it.
So next up on our agenda is an update, we'd asked for an update on the immersion trip to the Dominican Republic a few months ago, so I believe we have one.
You do so in your um, in your drive, you'll see a very short slide deck um from Ms. Cox Stavros. Um, who just wanted to um do her diligence and provide you the update that I believe she was kind of on the hook for when this was originally proposed and approved by a school committee. Um, and then we had a great conversation, the two of us, about once the trip is over. S- in similar fashion to the presentations you saw tonight, to have some students who went on the trip really come back and give the community through the school committee a nice overview. Presentation, um so we just asked that you check out that overview slide deck, um if there's any questions or anything you have, you can filter them to me through the chair. Um, and then I can, I can always go back and ask the questions, but I, it seems pretty um thorough and clear to me.
Yeah, they said, we had already approved this, it was really just an update that the trip has been slightly shortened due to high flight costs. But there's nothing here really to approve, it's more of an update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my daughter went on this trip a few years ago and it was probably one of the best things she did in high school, it was fantastic.
That's great, so I think we move on now to personnel, just checking to see if there's anything. That's nice, so Josh, that means hopefully you're feeling better, at our last meeting you were about to keel over.
Yeah, the winter tends to do that. All right, it's my turn. Um, yeah, all right, so we've been working through the fall to put these together in collaboration with different students who come to our meetings. Um, with administrators, I've been meeting with Ms. Rose and um Dr. Branko to talk about all these things. And a lot of this is stuff that a lot of students had seen and recognized before, um and we're just codifying it here. So um, that brings us to the next thing, what is SAC, I won't belabor this too much cuz we've gone over it a lot, but um. Uh, we work, you know, with students, um we bring their concerns to administrators and we find real ways to make the change that they wanna see in their school happen. Um, we deal with, you know, if they have specific issues um with certain subjects, we can help them with those things. We can help them find the community leaders that can provide them the resources that they're looking for. Um, so that brings us to our principles, um we guide ourselves in all of the decisions that we make on our core principles. Um, so we start with a student independence and maturity, um which is a pretty self-explanatory one. Um, a lot of students, um even at younger age levels can sometimes be thought of as less mature, less independent, but I think um the more. Uh, opportunity that you give them, the more that they'll show themselves to actually be really mature. Um, belief in reasonable causation, this is a little bit of an interesting one, um in a lot of the issues that we look at at school. Um, sometimes some teachers or, you know, however it happens, sometimes a lot of issues get chalked up to, oh, that's just how kids act. Um, you know, maybe a kid is acting out in class, um you know, maybe kids are, you know, engaging in at-risk behaviors, those things. A lot of times can just be, you know, kids being kids, but we have found through discussions with students who have engaged in those behaviors and through different. Uh, discussions with different staff members, that it can often be clea- uh traced to a clear source and if you just do the, like the hand wavy thing. Then you often miss a lot of the nuance that comes along with those issues. Um, and the belief in the possibility of growth and change, you know, in similar fashion to the other stuff, none of this is set in stone, all of it can change and um. You, you just don't lock yourself down before you begin. Um, when we're addressing issues that are brought to us, um we follow some ta- we use some tactics, um we start with like bottom-up student-led initiatives. Um, we find that like stuff that comes from within the s- school body is often, you know, more effective than something that's perhaps, you know, from your teacher just telling you to do something. So we work with um extracurricular leaders, um you know, students who have a lot of social capital to, you know, br- really bring the message. Um, to the students through the student body, um we maintain open lines of communication. There was a couple incidents last year where there was a miscommunication between administration and students and it became a huge issue when there was in fact no issue there, so. We just always try and communicate as much as possible, um and student resources and education, you know, this is really focusing on. You guys are refocusing from punitive punishments to educational opportunities, um and we're doing the same thing with all of the things that we're recognizing. Um, for example, we've been working on um talking with Dr. Branko about implementing something from the American Lung Foundation, they have. A lot of alternatives to suspension for kids who are caught vaping, um and those are a lot of great educational resources. Um, that brings us to our focus areas, so these are the biggest issues that we've noticed, um all fall under these three major categories. Um, we have student health issues, this one was big over the pandemic with physical health, but also with mental health as we return to the school environment. Um, to the, just today in SAC, we looked at the um, the health curriculum guidelines, which are from nineteen ninety-nine, so. That's a pretty self-explanatory there, um and I also went over them with Dr. Branko, so we were looking at ways, you know, that we could implement these both in freshman seminar. And in middle school health courses and in elementary school health, um so that they can be as modern and as effective as possible while also still meeting the. Very outdated curriculum guidelines, um uh, school environment, um this is, you know, we focus on um equitable opportunities for students. And providing them resources and making sure that the classroom is really a safe environment for all students, um because anything that isn't conducive to that. Really harms our school committee um as a whole, um and the last one is positive staff and student relationships, which is also something that Dr. Branko's been working on in professional development. Um, this is, this is pretty self-explanatory, but there's sometimes a like adversarial relationship between, um you know, teachers. And students and parents and with the things that we're doing, we're working to change that and you know, sometimes that's because, you know, this teacher did this. Punishment or whatever and I'm not happy with that and you know, that's, goes back to the educational resources and things like that. Um, and you know, it's just shifting that paradigm and you know, you guys see it all the time in school committee, so. And then our last slide is, are the next steps that we're working on right now, um so at the bottom I already covered, um we're working on um health curriculum. Um, we're working to develop professional development that focuses on the things within our focus areas, um a lot of it aligns with what Dr. Branko has already been working on. Um, we're working to bring outside educational opportunities such as the program from the American Lung Foundation, you know, potentially outside speakers to talk about, you know, their struggles with mental health. Um, and continuing working with students and administration on, you know, selected issues, cuz there's always new things that come up, so, yep.
Do the various student advisory committees ever have like a, a group meeting or is there any connection between the different levels of SAC?
So there's um the SAC at the high school level where we're elected from high school students and then there's the student council. Um, and the student council in the high school and in the middle school both focus more on spirit activities and we focus more on the policy side of aspects, you know, things relating to the school committee. Budgets and things like that, um we were reading through handbooks and things like that. Um, we do, are, we are looking to do more outreach, um there has been outreach in the past, I remember when I was in middle school in, on the student council, the SAC came down and gave a presentation. We're planning to do similar, um we're also looking at giving a presentation during a Thursday assembly or a Tuesday assembly. And looking at, you know, potentially gathering some data during that assembly, um in, you know, sp- about selected issues and things like that. Um, so there's, there's a difference, but we do work closely with them and a lot of the people who come and bring issues to us and, you know, discuss that. Are from the, um, that are from the uh student council, the other thing that we are trying to be mindful of is a lot of kids. On these extracurricular panels already are a specific subset of the school population who may be very involved. So we are working to engage a lot of kids who may not necessarily be as involved and who, because they're not as involved, may be more likely to engage in those at-risk behaviors.
Great answer, any questions or?
I have a question, it probably should have been for the um, for someone else, but I'm gonna ask you. So eh, you know, equity, like you're reaching out to people with, you know, social capital and you're trying to help kids that are maybe falling behind, a lot of times that's because. You know, things at home or, you know, they don't have some of the resources and, you know, I, I've seen equity problems like parent. Parents who are engaged in a community can find good internships for the kids.
Yeah.
Or um can get the kids to the club or um, you know, make sure that they engage with theater and things like that, are there things you feel like the students can do to help connect? Kids with equity challenges?
Yeah, a lot of what we're doing has been um education about the things that already exist in the school and then bringing in the outside opportunities like things from the American Lung Foundation. Who have, you know, like counseling opportunities for kids who may not be able to access counseling through their healthcare provider, um but. A lot of it is just educating students about what's already there, so you know, we had a couple of freshmen come to our SAC meeting today. And these are students who may not have been involved in the past, um who didn't really know what SAC was. And we talked them through a lot of things that we were working on and a lot of it was new to the students, so through the students themselves, through, you know. Maybe, you know, leaders of friend groups that might not be as involved, things like that, we were, like for another example, when the um. Uh, when the school committee, you guys passed the uh revised um dress code and you guys allowed them to wear hats, it was a big thing for a lot of students. So bringing, you know, educating them about how they can actually make change in their community and how, you know, what opportunities are really available. Um, is, has been really, really helpful for, for um remedying some of those issues.
So I think what's interesting when you listen to all of the student presentations is you hear that there's common through lines. Connected to the work that we started at the beginning of the school year with my entry plan, when we were talking, talking about restorative practices, developing an equity mindset. Developing a sense of belonging, which is that relationship between teachers and students, um and so Josh and I meet once a month minimally, sometimes it's twice a month. Before school committee meetings to really kind of um calibrate what's going on, I know Ms. Rose will go to the meetings if possible. Um, so the, the two of us feel like there's almost a leadership coaching component that's going on and then really eh, Josh's organization and all of the student. Leaders in the, in, in particularly the high school have this shared responsibility for getting the shared. have this shared responsibility for getting the shared voice of, of all of the, um, students to us. And I, so I think, um, as I complete the entry plan, you know, you heard Amy talk about communication. We've talked about the sales pitch. You're gonna tell us about the communication, um, subcommittee meeting a little bit tonight. We, you pulled up the website in real time while we're talking. We understand the importance of the forward-facing profile of our school district. Um, and we are behind the scenes doing a ton of work on that, and the hope is by the end of this school year, you're gonna start to see the fruits of that labor happen. Um, and it is about, I hate to use this language, but it is about PR, it is about letting the community know all of the things we're good at. And, and honestly, we're in a self-reflection mode as a leadership team, and so are the student leaders. We're in, we're in reflection mode too, to try to figure out where are the holes in our programming, where are the holes in offerings? Um, and that's what Amy alluded to, that the high school's doing that work right now, um, looking at programs and course selection. And there have been student voices in those conversations for the past year. Um, what courses do you feel like your peers in other schools are getting to take that you don't get to take? Or when you hear that we have an engineering student who's out there doing a year, a year and a half of engineering work, but maybe her coursework wasn't rigorous, but the internship was. You know, it, I, it's important to understand that, that, that there's a powerful voice come out of our students. Um, so I, I know you're only one representative, but I do appreciate that voice, and, um, it's important that you guys keep working hard.
Can I also say, a lot of the things that show up as through lines, like, they don't come from you. Like, I, I will have, we'll have meetings with the, you know, with, with student leaders, with the student council, with the SAC, and we'll talk about all these issues that we see and we'll brainstorm like ways we can come up with them. And then I'll go have my meeting with Dr. Branco, and he's like, I'm already working on it. It's like, so a lot of the things have already been recognized. Um, and I think it's a really refreshing change in the schools.
That's great. Thank you, Josh. That was a great report. Communication segue there.
So Kathy, Riley and I, the communications subcommittee, met last week. Part of what we were doing was kind of doing a ground-up look at the school committee's role in communications. Um, the school, the commu- district communication plan had, over the years, I think we looked back, there were things in the drive back to, you know, two thousand and fifteen, had kind of fallen into the lap of the school committee um, to fill, to fill maybe a void that was there. Um, and when we started with our new website, we have new leadership with Dr. Branco. In looking at it and talking with Dr. Branco, talking to other members of the school committee, the, the school committee being sort of in charge of the communication plan is not appropriate. Um, and not effective, because we don't have the, you know, we don't have the expertise. We don't have the human power to do that. Um, so that was one thing that we looked at. Another thing, um, was following up, um, from some of the information that we got from the mask. This is driving me nuts. Um, that we got from the mask conference about different ways to communicate and streamlining communication. Um, we are going to be taken down, as long as the rest of the school committee agrees, taking down the school committee Facebook page um, in a move towards just that streamlined communication, um, from all of the schools, from the district, and driving traffic to those modes of communication and to our website. I feel like this is the anti-communication report. We're taking down the Facebook page. We're not gonna be in charge of the communications plan. Um, you know, and some of the changes that we've just made, like being here at the library, recording the meeting, having those recordings available are part of the ways the school committee is communicating out to the public. Um, and another, one other thing that we did want to add, um, talking with some school committee members from other districts, something that they have done are sort of those, I don't wanna say, it doesn't have to be coffee, but meeting a school committee member, just sort of those open, um, those open engagements, like come to Brothers Brew and meet a school committee member. Come to the library, like maybe, you know, coming here in the morning if someone's able to, when parents of younger kids are here. Now that we're gonna be open, the library's gonna be open in the mornings now. Um, and just sitting down and having people be able to come, talk to us, ask questions. Um, and if we wanted to, and if things come out of that where people sort of have specific questions or a theme keeps coming up, we could have more sort of specifically, like a workshop type thing. But really, from talking to other colleagues in different districts, they have not found those things to be very well-attended and to be better attended when you're just sort of having this, you know, what does the school committee do anyway? Um, you know, what are some efforts within the district? Um, so we would like to sort of, if there's interest in that, we would like to make sort of a more specific plan and come to you all with maybe some dates, some locations, um, to do that. And another thing that we had talked about, and which is recommended sort of for the communication with school committees was surveys. Now, there've been a lot, there's been a lot of surveying, because Mark's come in and he's done a lot of great work collecting information um, from all different stakeholders. So we were kind of thinking, there's been a lot of surveying. If there's a pattern that comes out of those surveys when Mark is, you know, when Dr. Branco's reporting out the information, maybe then we want, as a school committee, wanna take a look and say, hmm, we'd like to find out more about this. Um, but as of now, I think we've been, the surveys that, that have been done, we still need to get the information from those. And so those are the general items that we discussed.
As the chair, I guess, you know, you, you, you kind of made it about the, the anti-communication. I just wanna clarify that I think I appreciate and the district appreciates, um, kind of the shift, the shift in focus and priority and control, maybe. Um, so you know that we're doing a ton behind the scenes, you just don't see it all yet. Little changes like the weekly newsletters, my monthly updates, um, calendar, little tweaks to the calendars on the websites. Um, there's gonna be a huge refresh on the website. We've had three or four meetings already. And Mike is, is working really hard, so you will, you'll see a drastic change to the website sometime over the next couple of months. Um, so I will give you a timeline as soon as I feel like I'm confident to give you one. And then we are also training, um, the leadership team and all admin assistants on a three-pronged approach to social media. So with you pulling back, what will happen sometime after the first of the years, you'll see Facebook, uh, Twitter and Instagram accounts for all schools and the district. And then the website will still be the primary free, open-source sort of communication tool. So the hope is to have all those. We're also debating, um, LinkedIn to some extent, because some districts have leveraged LinkedIn for the hiring practices. Um, so we're gonna have a conversation about LinkedIn as well, but minimally, we're gonna start with those three. Um, and so there's a lot of training on the backend, um, and we're looking at an aggregator tool that will allow us to be really efficient, so I won't have to tweet and then post to Facebook and then post to Instagram. But it'll be an aggregator where I can put one social media tool, hit the button, and it'll go out. Um, so you're gonna, the hope is you're gonna see a lot of this. Um, it coincides nicely with the budget season, because clearly we're gonna have to do a lot of updates and, and discussion about moving the district forward. Um, so I, I, I appreciate the fact that you're going the direction you're going. Um, and then I feel like as we partner together between the school committee and the district, we'll be able to have great conversations about what's working, what's not.
And our role, um, I think as the school committee is to amplify the district communication, um, amplify those platforms, and also to have that communication with our constituents. Um, so, and to be that go-between with our constituents. So that is the appropriate role, and so I guess anti-communication was not right. But the, the school committee, sort of reframing our role in communication. Um, so in that vein, um, just to formally sort of pass that torch, I wanted to, um, make a motion to recommend, um, that we direct the superintendent to review and update the communication, um, plan as needed.
Second for that?
Discussion. So, um, that plan was, I think I might have written that plan in twenty fifteen.
Very good plan.
At the direction of the committee chair at the time, um, which was, which was Martha. But, um, and we took it from another school, and, uh, the role, as you said, should be amplification and advocacy. Um, and, um, we were kind of put in the position of not having much to amplify and not having the photos and things that you would be spread, the, the student stories. Uh, we did ask for them, but there just wasn't like-
I remember Colleen over the years has asked many times for them.
Election way. Yeah, there was no way to collect it, and teachers, you know, that's not their, part of their day job necessarily. They're taking a lot of those photos, but they're not, you know, getting it out to us. So, um, so I would say as you're considering revising it, it was written originally by, for a school committee. We borrowed a lot from it, but you might, as, as a district communication plan, you might wanna be very different than that, is what I'm saying. I'm giving you permission to, you know, take it to your, for your purposes, because it really was started as trying to be a school advocacy and amplification versus the source of the information. So you might wanna stray from it, and I would give, I personally would give you permission.
If you do it well, the amplification and advocacy steps should, should be easier, you know?
Yeah.
You recirculate the social medias, you direct people to the websites.
And there were a lot of things in there that were really never, there was something in there, there was a bullet point about web analytics. I'm a social worker. Um, web analytics, you know, so there were things that were pretty clearly, I think that got added later on to the plan.
No, we actually used that to redo the webpage, because there were so many buried pages in our original webpage, website that were never looked at through the web.
But again, that's, you know, that's like a job for Mike Montgomery, maybe not the school committee, um, communication subcommittee, so.
Well, I think you're right, Nicole. In a vacuum, oftentimes the school committee steps in. I, Amanda may remember a chair who got involved in scheduling the gymnasiums, but that's kind of a hallmark sign of, we're not occupying a role of oversight, support, encouragement, strategy. So I think in, in the moment, it was needed.
Yes.
And now we're at a different moment, and as someone who spends a few minutes every day unsubscribing to things, I really like the idea of, yes, the elementary, middle and high school parents may have different needs and different interests, and it's appropriate to be getting a different blast. But ultimately, parents are really stretched for time, and the more sources on the web that we have for them to access information, the less helpful it is, because you never know where to look. So having a consistent plan, focusing them on, this is the source of official information, it makes so much sense. So I think we were in the middle of a vote, we were looking-
Can I, can I have one more? Yeah. So, eh, eh, and I think, just wanna kind of con- confirm what, uh, Nicole was saying with the school committee kind of being that, that go-between, between the school committee and administration in the schools. And I'm wondering if in, um, the superintendent's kind of plan for this outreach and the PR piece, if, you know, you mentioned the newsletters, the updates, the website, all these things. In your plan, do you envision a role for the school committee members?
Yes.
And so I guess that's kind of what I, I'd like to see is not, I, I guess I don't wanna have your plan and then have the school committee try to figure a way to work with that or in addition to it. I'd like it to be all one big cohesive plan.
So ultimately, it would be drafted as the school district's communication plan that you will approve. Um, and so clearly there'll be, and it's a two-way, it'll show, you know, in my head, it's a two-way communication plan. It's gonna let us, let people know how our forward-facing information's going, it'll let the community know how best to contact us and at what level that's appropriate, and ultimately it'll spell out-
And when you say us-
The district.
The district, including the school committee as well.
Yes, yes.
Because I, I, I could see the school committee being a great place for community members to come to with what's working, what's not working, and having that brought to, to the school's attention, yeah.
Yep. So we'll, it'll, there'll be a lot of, um, iterations of this, I think, before it's finally rubber-stained, so.
And just to add a little bit to that, and our role as the go-between is often to tell people, as Nicole does all the time, talk to, go to the teacher first, go to the principal next, go to the superintendent, like, we can't solve your problem.
It's an escalation chain.
So, do, do, identifying that role within the communications plan also backs up what we tell people. Like, here, here is how you do it. As we said, here's how you do it. Here's your manual for figuring out how to do that internal communications too. And if they don't need to elevate it, of course, we can bring it to the table here.
Okay, so I believe there's a motion on its table. So now it's seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, which would move us to the entry plan update. All done, right?
Uh, no, it, it's a thirty-second commercial. It's almost the same commercial every month at this point. Um, so thank you to everybody in the community who's participated. Um, I've basically closed down the one-on-one interviews at this point with targeted stakeholders, with, with a few kind of still hanging out there to come with an open invite. Um, and then we are scheduling focus groups internally right now. The hope is to get them all done in December. And if that doesn't happen, um, some of that will spill out into, um, into January. I have begun informal reviewing, so I'm not doing a data sort and coding any of the data yet. Um, but as Principal Rose alluded to, there are certain businesses of education, for the business of education that has to happen in certain times. So, for example, the budget season kicks off now. Um, the scheduling process at the high school has to kick off at a certain time. We have to start to let students know what classes we are offering and why. So, um, as she mentioned earlier, I have been pretty heavily engaged in meetings with curriculum leadership at the high school. Um, we've had conversations, and just so the community and the committee understand this, we've had conversations about the uniqueness of Rockport, and since there isn't a director of curriculum, not everybody's used to a superintendent being in the room, either chairing or participating as a leader in some of those meetings in some districts. And so that's a cultural shift here, so, um, we're trying to make that clear that, you know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm leading shoulder to shoulder with principals um, and, and curriculum leaders when it comes to initiatives around teaching and learning. Um, so just so that you understand that that's really a, that's a model shift and a culture shift, I think, for a lot of professionals, uh, in the district. Um, I, I love doing it. Clearly, it's, it's a lean of mine. Um, but what's, what that's led to is fantastic conversations, starting with the high school, around course offerings, electives, where the gaps are in, in, in what we offer and don't offer. Um, so my hope is as the budget evolves, you'll start to see some real value added, um, coming out, um, as early as right out of the gate for next school year. So I, I thank, I thank the curriculum leaders, I thank the principals, I thank the teachers in the trenches um, for tolerating the fact that I'm probably going hard and fast, even though I keep saying publicly, you have to go slow to go fast. I'm not sure everybody feels that. Um, so it might feel faster than people are hoping. Um, so I do appreciate the time and effort everybody's putting in on that. Um, and so I'll continue to give updates, but it, it looks like it's on track. My hope is to give an update, a final update, uh, on the date around March, so that the leadership team can shift to developing our, our three- or five-year strategy of, of improvement from April to August.
Great. And that's what I picked up from, I mean, you have your general, um, sequence of events there. And as I recall, the first goal was to get the interviews done by December, and so you're on track for that. It's a lot of people you've talked to. Okay, so that would move us to the addendum to handbooks.
So I, I think we talked a little bit about this in a previous meeting, um, when I tied it to our work around restorative practices, that the legislature has changed the state law when it comes to disciplining students, um, and how we have to do, which is, it's a great change, actually, very, I don't wanna make sure I'm heard clearly. It's a very positive change for the community, for the climate and culture of schools, and for recognizing the importance of changing behaviors. And to, to Josh's point earlier, what's the antecedent behind, uh, the action? Um, so a lot of brain research and, and, um, social, emotional research behind these decisions. So, um, with the help of our district, one of our district's attorneys, um, we have crafted new handbook language that should be inserted ASAP. Um, so we have been using it softly so far, but, uh, we need just a formal approval of this language. It's already been vetted by our attorney, and as soon as you approve it, it will get slid right into the handbooks, um, so that we are compliant with the law. And just as a reminder, it basically means we have to do our diligence around meeting the needs of the student and offering lots of opportunities restoratively before just pulling the trigger on a traditional hierarchical punishment that some of us grew up with, before you just suspend, before you go to in-school, before you throw a detention. There needs to be a lot of work behind all of that.
Right. But, but essentially, this is state law, so it's not-
It's, it's not really a debatable thing. This is, the, the attorney's literally handed it to me and said, this is it for your handbook, so, but it does need your approval.
This covers in-school suspension as well as-
Covers all, all discipline. Yep.
Any other questions on this, or?
Can I just say, um, I had a couple of conversations with teachers about this new, um, program. And I think a lot of, some of them, not a lot of them, but some of them were concerned that it's a great, like, they all supported it resoundingly, but they were a little worried that if you implemented it badly, it could have counterproductive effects.
Sure.
So I think, um, keeping tabs on that, which I know Dr. Branco will do great on, is very important as we go through this process.
Yeah, and so I, I think I mentioned this publicly at our last meeting, but it, um, we started restorative practice, professional development of the leadership team, uh, two or three weeks ago, I thought, or a month ago now, it was right before our last meeting. Um, we contracted with George Cohen, who, uh, comes out of the main restorative practices company, happens to live in Gloucester. So we've been able to leverage his locale, um, and we just, um, contracted with him. So our January professional development day, it's the end of January, he's gonna come in and do full-day professional, half-day professional development with all staff. And then after that day, he's gonna do three to four days of job-embedded professional development at the school level during the school days with teachers. So there'll, there should, there'll be a minimum of four to five- So there'll be a minimum of four to five job-embedded professional development opportunities for all staff pre-K to 12 with George and his programming and all admin will be part of that training as well. And then ultimately, as you've mentioned many times before, we need to make sure this information gets to students and families so that they know, you know, I'm 50-something years old, I'm just used to the punishment world. So if I wasn't an educator, I wouldn't potentially value this shift. So we have to make sure that, that we understand the shift and the community understands the difference.
It's, it's been well-supported by students. I mean, in all of our conversations with them, it's all been a resounding, like, suspension doesn't work. Like, for a lot of the offenses, it's not something you can just suspend away or, you know, you have, give a detention and like, ooh, no, a detention, you know, stop. So it's, it's a great change and I think a lot of students would be very happy to know that their teachers are taking a very active role in making sure that they care for the whole child.
Right, so do we have a motion to approve the handbook addendum as presented tonight?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. So now, soft start, opening bell, fiscal year '24 budget.
So.
Spotlight.
Yep, fantastic. So, we've been waiting all year for it. So, there's going to be a shift, right? There's going to be a shift in style, there's going to be a shift in presentation. Every time there's a new leader, it goes, it goes from a shift in delivery style to a shift in how you present documents. So tonight I wanted to discuss with the help of the chair and with the help of June, the 10,000-foot view. Where we've been so far, the work that we've done to set up this process and then what the next two or three meetings will ultimately entail. You have some supporting documentation in the drive that we've already started to load in and then obviously as we get going through these meetings, we'll keep dumping as much into that drive as possible.
Mark, can I just jump in for a second and add?
However you like.
Shift, yes, but also I think the way I think of it is there's an opportunity with a new leader, with a new CEO, to do a check on, is the current system working for us or best practices being employed? And for those of us who went to MASC this year, you know, even if you've been doing this for a while, the ability to refresh what you think of as a good approach by seeing what other people are doing, what larger districts are doing, it's really helpful. It's growth, it's questioning your own assumptions and it's practicing sort of the critical reasoning that we try and instill in our students in terms of, you know, evaluate what you're doing, check your assumptions, compare and then make a decision. So I think more than just, it's a new guy and it's a new way of doing things, it's an opportunity. And I think you've really taken advantage of that moment to provide something that, you know, may be more easily digestible for the public in terms of evaluating complex information and putting it into the right buckets. And even more digestible for the school committee, where I know we've been asking June in prior sessions, if we organize this slightly differently, we can keep track of what we're talking about without, with a lot less struggles. So I just wanted to add that.
So the big picture goal is that we will always continue to have overview documents and deep-line item spreadsheets, clearly. But from a packaging standpoint, the ultimate goal by the time that this committee votes to approve a proposed budget for the town is that it would be packaged in a solid-bound budget book, proposed budget book, that will be available through PDF and available in hard copy for the entire community. And it will tell the story, soup to nuts, for why we've made the decisions, what the educational values are behind the dollars being spent, where we've tried to be fiscally conservative and responsible, where we've had unintended costs that were out of our control, so that there's, there's more substance behind the numbers. And I think, I think the typical taxpayer would hopefully appreciate that process as we move forward. So some of the things I included in the slide deck tonight are the overarching, big-picture language that we're starting to embrace. I think it's important, it should go without saying, but I feel like we have to say it, that we have to remind ourselves that, you know, our number-one constituency is this group of young people that cannot vote. And so the budget represents the future. The budget represents children three, three-and-a-half to 18, 19, 20 years old. And these are the people who are going to take care of us someday and we need to make sure we have done right by them all the way through their public education. The budget process that we've embraced here is a zero-based budgeting process and it has been a full collaborative effort. So the leadership team meets, we've normally met twice a month. I believe we've ramped that up pretty heavily the past month or so. So we have started to meet regularly. The chair has seen a lot of the internal documents. Each principal and each leader has been responsible for developing a justification document. They've taken a look at staffing patterns, they've taken a look at class size, they've taken a look at programming and offerings and they've started to build their wish list, so to speak, for what we'd like next year to look like versus this year. And then the past two meetings, we've pulled those together, synthesized that information to really try to turn the outcomes into numbers so that we can start to have a real cost conversation. So I think it's really important that the community understands that this has been a full-team effort with the leadership team. There is staff input, curriculum leaders are also doing the same work with principals. So curriculum leadership is actually filling out documents in feedback forms right now. What do you need? What are the absolute must-haves for next year? What would you like to have? What's a three-to-five-year wish for you? And so I'm trying to build a budget with the help of the leadership team that makes sense for us for next school year, but also might paint a picture and foreshadow the educational goals and intended outcomes and tie that to money. And I think hopefully that'll be a refreshing way to look at it and it will, honestly, it helps those of us leading the district make sense of aligning the work to, to the dollars that we have. So that's basically the highlight of this first section on the slide deck. We spent some time crafting this goal. We've had input from faculty members, leadership team and Chairman Kelly to take a look, to make sure we have a really clear goal, so I wanted to run this by you all tonight to make sure that we understood. So I won't read it line for line, I'll have you take a look at it. Many people will say that it's difficult to do these two things at the same time or that you can't do them. It's difficult to be fiscally conservative in your budgeting and to still move an organization forward. I argue that in public education and in public business, you don't have a choice. So that is the unique difference between public and private institutions and organizations. So the two bullets have been carefully crafted so that you understand what's happened already and so that you understand what's behind the very first set of numbers you're going to look at tonight and that this process is iterative and it will lead to a refinement of the numbers over the next five, six weeks. So we have dug in deeply and started to identify staffing, programmatic priorities. We've reviewed schedules, programs, patterns, student data. And we've really, really collaborated with as many internal educators as we can to make some meaningful systemic improvements into how we foreshadow what we offer kids and how we program our schools. At the exact same time, as you look ahead, and I'm sure you already have, to the numbers, we are realistic about having to close the current gap that exists as we develop this work. So the leadership team is doing both. They're doing the, how do we move the organization forward work? And how, and the language they're going to get sick of me saying is, how do we rearrange the deck chairs? We can't just come to the community or the school committee and say, we need 19 more FTEs. We know, we know it's not going to happen. Yet, we still have holes in programming and holes in services that need to be addressed for our students every single day. And so we're taking a really good look at how do we close the gap, how can we get leaner and meaner? And how can we redistribute FTEs and services and, and, and human resources in a, in a creative way that maybe we haven't done recently? Before we look at numbers, any thoughts on those two slides or do you want to go right to them?
So maybe, Mark, just to emphasize, because sometimes the metaphor of rearranging the dex chairs sends maybe not the message we're intending. The thought here is that there are thoughtful evaluations concluding that have to do with what the needs of the system are.
Correct.
And then building the budget up from that, rather than maintaining everything at any cost to be just the same as it always was.
Correct. We're looking heavily, heavily, heavily at student needs, social, emotional and academic and trying to leverage the resources we already have.
Right.
Including human resources.
Which is not surprising, given what occurred during the COVID years that have just happened relative to social, emotional impacts on all of us, but students especially.
And we've had lots of conversations at the state level with leaders about recognizing that we can't keep talking about social, emotional learning over here and academic progress and growth and achievement over here. They're forever tied together. It saddens me that it took a pandemic for some of us to just talk about it this way, but so be it. We're here now and so we all know that if students have a sense of belonging, if they feel like they're part of the community, if they feel safe and secure at school, if they're mentally healthy, we get the best out of them. And they can demonstrate academic growth and achievement. We know that factually. Now, we know it even more now because, because of the pandemic. So all of these decisions that we will talk about after tonight's meeting when it comes to programs and personnel, we will, we will clearly demonstrate to you that they're based in factual need for our students.
Right. And I, just foreshadowing, there seem to be topics here for us with our state legislators when they appear next time because part of that gap you foreshadowed has its origin on approvals made by the legislature, perhaps for entirely needful things, but they have dramatic impacts, to be sure.
So you have this in your drive, I'll put it up and if June doesn't mind, June will kind of step us through. This is the high-level overview. There are seven or eight tabs behind this, obviously. But tonight, we're just going to start with the high-level overview and June is going to focus on three particular areas and two, much more importantly, so that we understand why the gap is presented the way it's presented.
Right, thank you. The three gaps that, well, the three high numbers that you see up on above that are probably alarming. You would see athletics, which is highlighted. There is a disclaimer that is a very small budget. So when you reallocate or truth in lending of what has happened in the past, and we are trying to do that, be very transparent, by looking at last year to predict next year, it's a very small change of only $24,000, makes it a 20% increase. So I don't want people to think that we're just exploding on something. And I want to explain how our tax dollars pay for athletics. Your tax dollars are paying for the athletic director, the coaches, the officials. And very specific expenses, because as you can see up above, we do offset the budget with your user fees and gate receipts. So that is removed from that number up above. So expense-wise, you're paying, the taxpayers and the school budget are paying for the membership to MIAA, to our leagues, Cape Town League, maybe a Commonwealth Conference on occasion that we have joined for a particular sport. And the only expense that's being covered is ice time. The ice time bill can be anywhere, depending on the success of the season, from $14,000 to $20,000. That's asking a lot when hockey is paying $400 a child. So that is what, that is paid. Your user fees and donations and gate receipts are covering all the equipment, all the transportation, all the additional expenses. Now that could be your medical supplies, your awards, your lines for your fields, stuff like that. So that, we wanted to say, even though that stands out, that that is so insignificant really in a $17 million budget, but we wanted to report it correctly and reflect it for next year appropriately.
June also uses language like we don't budget for success all the time, so.
I think that's, yes.
So I don't want to take the words out of your mouth, but you've said that repeatedly to me. So we are proud of our athletic teams, we want success, but with success comes more cost as the season gets extended and as you pay more fees.
Yes, so for example, that budget doesn't allow for necessarily, if all of a sudden there's a huge interest in a sport, a spike and you need a freshman team, that budget will not reflect that. So the revolving fund is being looked to for that. And success, also an additional ice time, additional transportation costs, additional officials. The coaches are getting a flat fee whether they succeed or not, they're not getting additional money for going. So that's being absorbed by athletics and we do need to really thank the Friends of Rockport Athletics. They pay for every uniform. So the taxpayers and the parents are not paying for their uniforms. So that's, that's a tremendous cost and we cannot thank that group enough for that. So with that said, let's.
June, can I just, navigationally, because sometimes I think when we dive in, we get into particulars and sometimes the thread of the narrative can get lost. So just from my own simplistic way of thinking, budget is a good faith estimate of what we think the cost will be. It'll never be exactly what we projected because there are a lot of moving parts to it.
Correct.
Our '24 budget is different from what we thought it was going to be with this re-projection based on three factors. So right now what you're doing, or primarily based on three factors, there are three large items that are out of sync. So we're now traveling through those three items, the first of which was athletics. And part of what you're saying with this is, the number may appear large to some degree. That's because we had these costs not necessarily all included in one line item. So we have now adjusted to do that. And then you've taken us on a sort of 10,000-foot level investigation into, keep in mind, even with that increase, it's about $24,000 and there's all this other stuff that other entities besides the parents are kicking in for. So relative to our budget, it's not like our budget is being thrown out of whack because suddenly we're profligate spenders on sports. It's because we're changing how we're describing these things by, truth and, truth and lending is really about, we're simplifying this for the outside world to see, this is the total cost of athletics and it's augmented heavily by Friends of Rockport Athletics and other sources.
Correct. And also just when you see the percentage increase up above, when someone sees 20%, the natural reaction is outrage or shock or whatnot. But in the perspective of, because that budget line is so small, a $24,000 correction.
Right.
Creates that percentage. So I just wanted to, truth in lending out there, so it didn't become the focus of a budget discussion and why we're trying to close a $300,000 budget gap from the target of the program we're hoping to achieve. And we just wanted to clear it and get it off the table right tonight on the first round. So then we can just set it aside and move on to what the real issues are.
And I think that the overarching issue with this whole, or the overarching goal of this whole process is, this is a rough projection, but it's pretty accurate. There'll be a lot of activity to get us to where we think this is containable.
Round one.
But this is just the, the first blush. How far off are we if all of these things were the least palatable outcome of what we think might happen? Okay, I'm with you.
Okay, so now on to the hard problems. And as you can see, it is our special ed student services budget and our operations and maintenance. They have significant increases and unfortunately, they're items that are out of our control, mostly. For example, within the special ed budget, the state has approved all private schools a 14% increase next year in their tuition rates. To Rockport with our current student load, now that means we could have more students going out. So we're hoping that nothing changes for the next year and a half, which isn't likely. That translates to $200,000. Now as you see, with our plan of $310,000 that we're trying to close, there's $200,000 of it right there.
So that, I want to pause on that and make sure you've looked at the supporting documents in the drive and that we have a real conversation in public about, about that. So the operational services, services division of the state came out with this change and basically allowed a 14% increase. They sent this out to districts, they sent it out to private service providers. And as June has so eloquently put, if somebody allowed you to raise your prices by 14%, why wouldn't you do it? So all of us at the leadership level across the state have been heavily encouraged by our organizations to have these conversations publicly. We have written letters, we have sent advocacy groups from MASSS and from MASBO to the state to talk to our legislators about this. But, and we've all reported the real impact to, to the state, to DESI and to MASSS at this point. So I just want people to know, we've had lots of communications between school districts and the state leadership. But the short version for Rockport is a 14% increase with our. But the short version for Rockport is a fourteen percent increase with our current out of district enrollment attached to private placements, not to the collaborative, is conservatively to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars and we're trying to close a budget gap of about three ten. Two hundred thousand dollars of that budget gap is not the district just looking for more.
Right. And these are, so these are students who legally have the right to get specialized services. And for those that are in private placements versus consortium, typically, June, are there two percent increases or what have we seen historically with those costs?
It can be anywhere, they, they change every year, you could see a five percent, you could see an eight percent. They're, the state is very generous to this group.
Right.
More than a collaborative, which is run by superintendents is their board. So obviously they're going to run a very tight ship because it comes directly back to them any decision they make.
I don't think it's been double digits, though, I think it's been five, six, eight.
Believe me, this is a blind side to every school district. Every school district is shocked. You know, we're asking this, our, our associations are asking for help creatively. Are, are, and in turn that you granted that, will the state consider maybe updating even just for one time, a possibility that was thrown out in our group? I don't know if it was formally presented, this is just from free talking within my association. Would you, would the state consider up, um, upping the percentage of circuit breaker reimbursement?
Yeah.
You know, one time, would you, would they consider giving ninety percent or a hundred percent of above in a very complex formula of contribution to offset that this one year? Because anything that we're doing that we're all coming well from our ESR money, that we survived the pandemic, um, through the help of the federal government, you're negating it.
Yeah.
Right off the bat.
And the big struggle now is the state doesn't move that fast with big decisions around supplemental funding. So we are all in a position at the local level to, to move through the budget process and to react to this, and we will make decisions, good or bad, based on this amount of money projected. Um, and then if the state comes back with a, you know, with pothole money or with some kind of fix, we've already made decisions, which is extremely frustrating for those of us who are trying to lead districts. Doesn't mean you can't undo them, I suppose, but it, it, it's very problematic when you're thinking long term. So.
I believe it was in the supporting documents that it's the initial, I mean, the immediate financial impact, which is huge. And then in addition to that difficulty, because we're all drawing from the same pool of staff in districts and in consortium, creating an issue with districts being able to hire special education staff. The consortiums being able to provide services and hire appropriate staff. So this is kind of like the immediate and then a lasting impact.
Yes, because theoretically what could happen is with that fourteen percent increase, they're going to have a windfall come in and all of a sudden they can up their salaries. And you used to not see particularly special educators, um, and parent professionals go in that direction, you used to see them start in those, in private settings and then come to the public for a lot of reasons. Some of us are really nervous that that, that's, that coin's going to flip on us now. And, 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 um, impact us negatively even more than, than some of the staffing struggles larger school districts are already having. And we, we've already had conversations right about our location in the state and how we have to be creative when it comes to marketing and hiring as it is to get people to literally drive over the bridge onto the island to come to work for us. And so I, I do have a fear that it could become staffing problematic. And as someone who sits on the board for our collaborative, that's not lost on us either. You know, people working at collaborative are going to start to say, well, why should I keep working here when I can go to a nice new shiny building? Or I can make more salary, I can get better programming. So yet I can't come back here as, as, as one voting member on that board of directors and say that we're upping the fourteen percent in a public situation either. So there's no great answers right now, tonight is just a heavy conversation.
Yeah, and it, that's why I'm saying perhaps this is a topic with our state legislators where usually there's, there's not a lot of content there other than what the state has done, but I think June remembers during COVID, as we were facing taking money back that the teachers were, and administrators had already earned to allow us to survive. You know, I asked the question, why are we paying schools that we, you know, kids aren't going there right now, should we be paying them? And the response from above very heavily from the state was, well, you have to support these places so they don't go under. So I feel like we were very generous in that time of need, but this just seems like a a shock, like there's no preview to this coming, it just happens.
And I get that it's based on a very, maybe outdated formula, you know? Um, or they didn't expect inflation to spike and, you know, it's based, they tried to explain it to us and it's based on inflation plus, plus, plus. And it just ramps up to this number, yet they don't have a ceiling. And I think that needs to be brought up to the state legislature, it's like, why don't you have an increased ceiling? That it, even if it did, I'm, we, we understand, but we're all living in that world as well of an inflation rate of X, but this is a ceiling. And no matter what the formula comes to, you're not going to get more than this in that, in a year of that circumstance. So it is something that I think every district in the state really needs to hammer home to their legislature.
And, and if I'm reading.
Unfunded mandate, and I know that's, it's, that's the catchphrase, but I mean, help.
Yeah. If I'm reading one of the documents correctly, the historical rates average at one point eight seven percent?
Yes.
Which is, I mean, that's much lower.
Is well below.
Than even some of the numbers you were saying, eight percent, like one point eight seven up to fourteen is, as you're saying.
Yeah, so when you.
Massive.
And so when you look at the number now, they're calling that fourteen percent, there's an addition of a five point one eight cost of living, a COLA, right, and then there's an eight point eight two workforce stability factor. And that's kind of like what sometimes we call in the regular world a market adjustment. Right, so they're, they're, they're doing a comparative analysis of what it's going to cost.
Have you heard any feedback in any of your groups you're with? Uh, you know, I know you're, you're, you, you said earlier, if you could raise fourteen percent, why wouldn't you? But, um, have you heard any feedback from any of the schools about whether they actually are? And, and I guess one of the, the follow ups.
We're all like in private discussions, we have. Why wouldn't you?
Right.
Because that's now your new base going forward. If that's your company or your school and you own that school, why wouldn't you? Because now you're always going to get that plus going forward.
So one of the conversations my group is having is, do we create, at least for the, for the superintendents up in the North Shore, do we create one letter that we all use that goes out to, let's say we have, uh, eighteen students out of district and eleven private schools, for example, sending each one of those private school directors a, a pointed letter that says due to this adjustment coming out of OSD, we really need to know what your tuition changes are going to be.
So I was going to ask you.
Their normal practice is just a bilis, believe it or not.
I was going to ask you if they have a deadline to let you know.
We're going to ask for one, I think.
And then a follow up to that is how many students at these different schools? Is there a choice of the school that some of these students are going to, or are they pretty much so specialized? The schools that they need to go to those, that one particular school where there is no choice where.
The placement comes out of the special ed team process.
Yeah.
So one, once you've, you've sat on the team meeting and you, you get to a determination of whether the child can't, needs to be met in district or out, the next conversation is what type of programming? And that's where our, um, student service director and our.
Do some of these schools offer the same programming and then it's kind of up to the parents about which school they're choosing?
Up to the team, it's still up to the team.
Yeah.
The parents are a big component of that team, but it's up to the team to make sure it's the right match. It could come down to transportation, it could come down to like peer groups, there are so many drivers. Um, and in some cases, the child's needs are so specialized that there's literally one place within a commuting distance from where we are. And again, we're not, we're not helped regionally. Um, because we're not in the middle of the state where there are a whole bunch of, you know, half an hour drive.
So the, uh, there's no relationship between this and chapter seventy funds, but chapter seventy funds is a place where, you know, the state's supposed to be offsetting some of the costs based on some really, really old formula. Like if they're going to update this formula, shouldn't they be updating the chapter seventy formula?
That's what we're asking.
Yeah.
Yep, that's what we're asking.
Be tied together.
Has there been any feedback from representatives? No.
And is that something we should be considering writing to them?
Following up.
I, I think so.
I, I did just do a quick scan of the mask, um, listserv and they don't appear to be identifying this as something that they would be. Because in the past, sometimes they've put out
An alert.
Language or an alert or recommended, you all join together and send this in and I don't see anything on there, might be something we should send out as a question.
So Senator Tar and Rep Ferranti did receive letters from, from my office and I, I'm sure they received a letter from every single office within every school district for their constituents. So, you know, it, it's not falling on deaf ears, I don't want people to hear that wrong, it's just we haven't physically engaged with them, so I think the suggestion to say whether it's us alone or, or in a dual or tri-board kind of a setting, do we bring our, our legislators and elected officials together to have a real conversation about it? So that when they hear two hundred thousand and they see a three hundred and ten thousand dollar gap, they, they understand that that decision has really legitimately impacted this school district heavily. I, I, I have no doubt they know it, I just think that there could be a, there could be an olive branch thrown out there to have real conversations about this. So you want to take us to the next one?
The next one is operations and maintenance and looking back at what we spent last year in just oil and electric and knowing what we're all paying now. The one thing that's pretty consistent is the level of use over the years, so it's we have some confidence in the number. It's the rate that we don't have the control over. The town side would know that as well, where their oil and electric and all their departments and their fuel and propane and whatnot. That that is also rather out of your control as well. I believe we're on a rack rate contract and that is probably, uh, not to put you on the spot. That possibly that is continuing again for next unforeseeable future, we're tied to the town. Where it's part of a group, obviously, for better leverage. For better leverage on our fuel rate, our oil rate. Yes, so right now we're on a rack rate, so as it went up, unfortunately our rate went up, but also when it goes down, we do get a great discount. But based on that, we had to budget in this scenario up above, our oil and electric is one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars more.
Right.
And that is still rolling the dice a little bit on the electric. And I, it's a gamble. The oil, we did gamble this year and we're going to lose. So next year we wanted to be a lot more realistic.
And so.
The, 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 the time of the dollar fifty a gallon is over.
I think what makes, what makes me nervous since June and I have started to learn each other. I think I, I want to present, and this is, does not mean this was not how it was done in the past, I want to make sure I'm heard clearly. I want to make sure we are presenting a budget that is most representative of the true costs. And when you look at lines and you look at where we're assigning the money, that's why we've reconfigured the numbers in the athletic department. So in my first year together with June's help, a lot of June's help, the job here is to make sure that whatever we present really does represent the actual cost of doing business in, in the clearest way possible. And, and tonight, the driver that has to come out to the public tonight is, you know, while we have a number and a proposed, a very, very rough proposed budget that clearly will be refined over the next five, six, seven weeks, that starting number is three hundred and ten north and, um, almost all of it are, are come right out of those two bucket areas that we, we cannot cut from.
Right.
So when we make tough.
Not keep the school.
Right, so when we make tough decisions with the leadership team, and that's what I put on the previous slide, we have begun to develop a strategy to close the FY twenty four budget gap. We're not going to talk about it tonight because it's in a lot of, it's got a lot of moving parts, you will start to hear those in the January meetings. But what I need to tell you face to face is we have started that work, the chair is privy to some of that work already. And, and we are going to try to do both bullets, we're going to try to make really difficult decisions about closing the gap while still moving the school district forward. I actually feel pretty confident that i- if push comes to shove and we have to do it, we can do it. But it will be a shift for the district and it will be a shift. And there's, there's no opinion in my statement there, that's just going to be a shift in, in how we do business and how, and how we allocate. So there's a ton of work going on behind the scenes with the leadership team right now to make sure we can do both of these bullets. Can we move the district forward and continue to provide rigorous programming and offerings that prepare our kids for college and career as much as all of our, our other, um, public school peers do? And at the same time, can we close this gap and be respectful of the taxpayer? And so right now, you know, that number is a four point seven eight, we know that that's not going to be a real number. If you look at down at the bottom in the middle of the page there, you'll see two point five percent is our goal. That would be our hope is to see if we could get this number down to, to a, a palatable two point five percent increase. Um, and, and with a budget book and with some good narrative and some good justification for why those numbers exist, I, I feel confident that that would be an appropriate ask. So that, just so that people transparently understand that we do have a target in mind. So that they don't see the first number and just have mild heart palpitations over the budget.
Right.
But this is a part of full disclosure. We're showing these things that could not be predicted, we made good faith estimates based on the data we had at the time. It's a little jaw dropping when you first see it, we're going to work through the problem. And in the end, we're probably going to be at a place where traditionally we were asked for two point three, we may ask for two point five, but the, the difference between the point three and the point five does not come out to a hundred million dollars, so. So we'll just keep working the problem over the next five or six weeks.
If I could take a moment, though, to, on the offsets as well, that we've changed it a little bit. Some in a good way and some the number I, I'll be honest, I'm nervous that I wrote that number down. But, uh, circuit breaker, before you always saw in previous budgets, it was just a general number and then it was lumped together with school choice. But circuit breaker has rules. And what happens is the money we're receiving this year is based on what happened tuition wise with this very complex formula that so impressed with Cheryl Keating and Martha Wright that they understand that formula uh, and can upload all the data to give us as much money as possible. It's based on last year's tuitions, we receive it this year, we are legally obligated to spend it next year. So this year we are receiving eight hundred and twenty thousand plus change this year in circuit breaker money, so that's why it's budgeted next year as an offset, because we must spend that money in that way. We can't spend less just because we don't need it, we are obligated to do that. The state gave us to help us with our, uh, specifically, um, tuitions and some extra services within outside evaluations, physical therapies and other um, aspects of that. And most recently, they are assisting after the fact, if funds are available, then they move on to the transportation piece, but only if funds are available. And it's a formula, a fraction of a fraction of a fraction.
Which has never happened in modern memory.
Yes, but they did it. They did it and, but now this is, that fourteen percent can also unpack that next year because now what's needed for tuitions next year, when they fill out these forms in the spring, may chew up what is in their budget. That, so there is no transportation piece left over afterwards, so that's a real thing that we must consider as well and make sure our legislature knows that they better fund circuit breaker at a much higher level to accommodate that as well. So that's why that number is so high. The next line we broke out, um, it was a little bit different in the previous budgets. It was a note on the actual breakout of the special ed page and now we've included it. We do have, um, from year, sometimes none, sometimes several uh, school choice students who our department has decided must be outplaced. The parent can choose to still keep that child as a choice student. Under that model, then the sending district, whether it be Gloucester, Manchester, wherever, is obligated to pay one hundred percent of every cost associated with that child. I don't want that discussion that, well, here's school choice again and it's not, we're not getting our value. So next, next year, based on this year, we are estimating that there would be two choice children that we have outplaced. The parent has decided that they still want to be a Rockport student instead of their hometown. And we bill that, those city or towns the full amount. So that's why that line is there, because that is the cost of those services, one hundred percent. It's the final line that I'm very nervous about. Over the years, we have received, um, increasing amount of students and we've never had to use the full amount received, including the special ed increment for extra services. And it's always been rising and rising and rising and last year it was a pretty high number that we did use a lot of the sped increment to make the budget work. And it's always been rising and rising and rising. And last year it was a pretty high number that we did use a lot of the sped increment to make the budget work. We are at that threshold that we will be using every penny. We are, based on last year's receipts. We are needing every penny, one point five million of what we anticipate receiving. To make this budget work with a three hundred thousand dollar offset. So if we do not receive as many students and I'm not saying we're in the business of selling seats, that is not how we work. It is based on openings without additional resources being needed. But we are at that point, so if we receive whatever students less we receive is less money. If we do um have additional children going out and our sped reserve, which is very generous from the town side, isn't enough. Then we are going into the what little reserve we do still have on the books at the end of last year. We are hoping not to touch that or incrementally just shrink that on the side.
And best practice really is to not touch that account, but historically and even building this budget so that it didn't go above three hundred and ten with the gap. We've we've allocated every dime. Um, and so, you know, you and I have started these conversations. I think it's a big conversation for the committee long term. The value of choice is immeasurable to me as far as the community of our kids and what we get out of it. But I think we do have to keep looking at how we how we utilize those funds long term. We can't fix it this year necessarily, but I think we need to start to have a. Greater conversation as a community about.
Leaning ourselves, yeah. So June, for that, sorry to just to back up for a second, the school choice for out of district, the second line upwards of flow through. Does it maybe help to literally put like in perems? Flow through or something that indicates, we're showing you this number, but it's really just. This money is coming from the sending district, so it's not really an impact.
Well, it is listed above. The cost of that child is listed above in the budget, so we definitely wanted to have it as an offset, but we wanted it separate. So it's understood. I just I just wanted to educate the public.
No, what I'm saying is. Yeah. What what I'm saying is keep it there, but maybe just add a little text there that says flow through so that we get why it's being broken out.
Yeah, most definitely.
Some kind of.
But I will say those are the, to reiterate, the three key things is the uh tuition rates increases and also the transportation because fuel is tied to transportation.
Right.
Um, for special ed. That's a very significant dollar amount that when we do a deeper dive um and that we are obligated to do. Which is much more than even the two hundred thousand. The uh fuel and electric and the fact that I have a one point five million school choice offset. Those three things make me very nervous. Otherwise, I can't say enough about the district team. Just to reimagine their programs and in a way that is, I guess. You would use the phrase budget neutral, that if we rethink how we're doing things. You can shift within the district with what we have. And expand our program or not expand, but re reimagine. And not cost the taxpayer any money and I can't say enough and that's not reflected there. But in the meetings that I've been allowed to sit in, I I can't say enough about the creativity and I think you see it with um. The middle school and high school presentations tonight. Especially with Amy saying there were a lot of offerings that she made it very clear at no cost to the taxpayer. That's amazing and that isn't reflected there, but it's it's a story that has to be told and I think that's what gets to be told when you do a budget book.
Well, I think that's the the point is to show the value as well as the expense.
Tremendous value.
Has always been, what does it cost? What does it cost? But the real question is, what are you getting for that money taxpayer? And then they can make their own decision about whether they support that or not, so.
So you know this, we're working on a section in the budget book that's going to be entitled, for lack of a better term, right now, return on investment. A whole section that's really going to highlight. So when you talked about that page on the website where you had those little indicators. We want to spell it out in the budget book to say, listen, this is what your tax dollars are getting. This is your, our product are not widgets. They're other people's children and it's the future. And so this is your return on investment.
And we tried to do some of that in the twenty twenty.
I know it.
Budget book.
You'll you'll see some of that in there.
Yeah.
For that same reason, like it's not.
So as we move forward and you can um correct me if I miss anything here, as we move forward, we'll be looking at January meetings, two January meetings from a budget standpoint. And the the hope is that those at those next meetings, you'll see an updated version of this. And then we will also share with you all of the tabs, all of the detailed lines at every every school level in your drive ahead of time, which I know you're used to. And then um you'll also see. And you'll also see what we what we are comfortable with um. Calling the the budget gap proposal and that will probably the first time we have to talk publicly about what.
Solutions.
What the steps will take. Where where I will happily highlight the budget budget neutral moves, uh but at the same time carefully talk about um the gap closing methods. So that that will happen at those two meetings in January and the hope would be. That maybe by that second meeting, if we're in a good place, you're in a place where you can vote on a on a number for a proposed budget. Worst case, we're looking at first meeting of February, but I think we could probably get there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Two questions, maybe not for this overview, maybe for the budget book. One is, should there be in here some reflection of the preschool tuitions or? Does that not belong anywhere on this overview?
It can be in the budget book, but preschool tuitions um at spring town meeting are voted and they go into the sped reserve. And it should be made clear that the town contributes much more to the sped reserve than what the tuitions.
And should the sped reserve also be in here or is that just for the budget book?
It could be, so we've had a conversation already about um putting components. For lack of a better term, like the value added components of of the work in the in the community. Um, I just don't want to muddy the waters in a budget, in a proposed budget, a budget book with um pockets of money, so to speak, that actually aren't part of our budget.
Right, and I guess the, but that's great if it's in the narrative because it comes up and people think we're hiding it, so I just.
Yeah.
There are some people in the past who have accused of hiding things like that, so I just want to make sure it's there somewhere, but you're right, it's not really. Then the other thing and. The the other thing is the town does get chapter seventy funds and so. Again, it's uh, the chapter seventy funds are sent to the town to offset the cost of the schools. And it never comes, it just never shows up in our budget because it stays in the town funds, but I'd like to see an asterisk. Where we identify how much the town is contributing, just to show that there is a grant to the town to offset that a little bit. It's usually like one point five million.
I believe it's in our draft budget book already, if I'm not mistaken, but we can go back and look at. I think in the in the right, we've 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 created so many pages already. I believe it's in there, um, but if it's not, I'll.
But it most definitely could be. You could say the count, uh, yes, like thirteen points. Nine, one in one point something.
Five is offset with the chapter seventy grant, yeah.
And would Medicaid reimbursements be in a similar?
Yeah, we never had an amount to that.
Okay, it goes right into free cash.
And with the new system, it's not that robust. Uh, it's a nice bonus. It, glad the town has it. Our, some of our employees uh work on it and actually do all the work to receive it and we also farm then farm that data out to Shore Collaborative. Who actually does all the application work and files for that money on our behalf at a fee. Well worth it. And uh those funds go directly to the town. It goes, that's the way it works everywhere. I don't want to, anyone to say, well. Go to the selectmen and corner them and say, why don't, why doesn't the school get that money? It's from the students and whatnot. That's the way it's been set up by the state. It's been told that way and that's the way every town does that. And nine times out of the ten, the cities and towns are redirecting that money as part of their package. But we're talking under. In the best year ever, maybe under under a hundred thousand dollars and we're more definitely under fifty now. So it is, it isn't something that. It can be highlighted, but I don't, I don't know if it really needs to.
When we looked at it in twenty twenty, I think the. The average was something like eighty thousand.
Yes, and then that formula has changed where most districts dropped the part two because it would cost you so much money. To.
Yes.
Do the work necessary that almost every district except for a Boston or some large has dropped that part two and is only taking the part one money. So you're never even going to see that again, most likely.
So Mr. Chair, any thoughts on final discussions around budget process timeline?
So I'm feeling like the the big picture description of this is the budget spaceship has been hit by three meteorites. The engineers are in the back room working through the problem. NASA Control is confident that we're going to land this budget spaceship. It may not be. Exactly the same landing that we've planned or seen in years before. But I'm feeling confident based on what I've seen. From the team dynamics that you've been leading, that people are appropriately addressing first what's needed for the students. And then where we can potentially change our approach to also accommodate this, but clearly there's a lot of work and horse trading and evaluation that's being done, so. You know, I'm I'm feeling like the process that you've outlined. In terms of when we can sign off on a budgetary number that we feel good about. That is definitely a January thing, not a December thing, and it's probably a late January thing based on the amount of work I've seen. To resolve this and I think, you know, for us in terms of our state legislators, I think there's a conversation here, maybe a conversation with mask as well in terms of. Where is the effort to coordinate three hundred and fifty one cities and towns to say? You know, understand what you're trying to do with supporting those schools, but where's the support for us, particularly in perhaps a budget year for Massachusetts that's showing? You know, some plenty that could be distributed. Any other thoughts or concerns with that or? Okay, well, there's the opening bell, but.
Other than school committee discussion, that's everything on the agenda.
Yeah, is there any any other walk on topic that anyone would like to bring in? No need for executive session. Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All those in favor? Hi. Passed unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.